Okay, I'd like to call the February 8th, Pennsylshire School District meeting order with the budget releases.
My pleasure, Mr. President. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Lincoln.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Chassick.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Neimic.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a form, Mr. President.
Thank you. You're welcome, Mr. Lincoln. Okay, just real quick, the reason we were briefly later, the Board now executive session brought to tonight's meeting to discuss real estate, personal issues, and receive information. Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, may I have motion to approve the minutes for January 11th, 2016?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Neimic, second motion. Second, Mr. Leonard, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Information, Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. First off, we have Twin Seams, our student union representative.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Just a few things, since I saw you guys last week at the tech center. On March 5th, from 1:30 to 5 is our senior citizen prom. I got more information on it than last time. It will be held in the cafeteria. It's for ages 65-plus, so I don't think any of you guys are eligible.
Good answer.
The chorus and the jazz band will be playing, plus we'll also have a DJ. There will be dancing and food and a lot of fun. There's no cost, but if you want to get the word out, that would be cool. We're going to be working on getting the word out over the next few weeks. Also, the student union, each student union member is providing peanut butter to the food drive, and the students are doing a good job of collecting food and stuff for the food bank. And you might see signs around the school for Gimi Mosimo. That's to replace MORP as the prom fundraiser. It's to offset the cost of prom. Basically, girls will be able to wear their old homecoming or prom dresses, and guys, it's like a business casual, and it's going to be cool and lots of fun. Any questions?
You tell them, "Old folks, if they even address young fella to chef, we're here."
Okay. Yes, sir. All right?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Next, we're going to move on to our favorite time of the month, and this is why I always say I do the job I do, and that the school board does the job they do, and this is because of the students, and our favorite moment is when we have the Students of the Month. So we're going to start with Mr. Swartz, square of the elementary school from Harrison Park.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's my honor to introduce Peyton Newbauer as Harrison Park Student of the Month. Peyton is the daughter of Jeff and Chris Newbauer, and has a younger brother, Brennan. Peyton is a fourth grade student who enjoys learning new things and always puts forth her best effort. She credits her mom and dad with helping her do so well with her academics. Her favorite subject is math, and she enjoys having fun during the school day. Outside of school, Peyton participates in gymnastics and cheerleading. She also enjoys playing soccer with her brother, shopping with her mom, and going to new places with her dad. When she grows up, she would like to be a doctor and to help young kids. Recently, Harrison Park had a Never Give Up Week, where each day on the morning announcements and in the classrooms, we talked about always giving it your best and the importance of hard work and perseverance. We could not have come up with a better example of a never giving up student than Peyton. Mrs. Lance, her teacher, stated Peyton is one of the hardest-working students that I've come across in a long time. It is more often than not that a student will give up when faced with problems they cannot easily or quickly solve. Peyton, however, continues to persevere, asking for guidance but never expecting to be handed an answer. She's a quiet young lady, yet has a self-confidence to advocate for herself. Peyton stays focused on her schoolwork and is a great student to have in class. Mrs. Via, another one of her teachers, stated Peyton is the kind of student who always gives 100% of her effort. Whether it's on her tests, class projects, homework, or anything else, you can be guaranteed to receive Peyton's best work. When faced with a challenge, Peyton doesn't get discouraged. She works as hard as she can to complete the task and does it with a smile on her face. She's not afraid to ask for help, take risks, or try something new. Peyton is the kind of kid that if at first she doesn't succeed, she will try and try until she completes the task. Her work ethic and drive makes her a role model for everyone. Peyton is an outstanding student, possesses many of our school's core values, and is overall a great kid. On behalf of the students and staff of Harrison Park Elementary, I'd like to congratulate Peyton for being the Elementary Student of the Month.
Congratulations to Peyton, to my parents, to your grandparents, very proud of you. Keep on the schoolwork, keep continuing success to you, and keep on shopping with your mom. Make sure she tells you all the good bargains, you'll have them all your life.
Next, we have for the middle school, Mr. Solomon from Trafford Middle.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce Anna Johnson. Anna? Anna Johnson is an eighth-grade student at Trafford Middle School, and she's here with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson. Mrs. Johnson, I want to point out, is our library aide at the middle school and does a fabulous job. And also has a sister that's a junior here at the high school, another wonderful student. She couldn't make it tonight because she's home studying for a push test, so she's working hard as we speak. This is about Anna. Anna is an extremely bright young lady, high honors student, and has always been at Trafford Middle School. Very strong student, all As. She takes our two advanced courses and is a member of our Spectrum program. While at school, she's involved in the choir, in the drama club, where they practice twice a week, and if you haven't seen our show, I recommend you come see her perform. It's amazing. When I first heard her, I couldn't believe that that voice was coming from this young lady. It's amazing. And she's also a teen guide for the elementary school's Battle of the Books. When not in school, she's involved in other community activities, like voice lessons, that she's been taking part of for the last five years, every week. She's a leader at Vacation Bible School and Story Hour at her church. She has helped with Meals on Wheels and spends her summers working at Elliott and Davis Law Firm filing and organizing cases. When Anna's not doing all of that, she enjoys playing the piano and the guitar, drawing, writing, and reading. When I spoke with her, she says she plans on pursuing profession in the medical field, and right now is considering becoming a veterinarian, physician's assistant, excuse me, or pediatrician. But she hasn't ruled out being an author as well. Her teachers say the following: She has fabulous grades, a great leader, but doesn't flunk it outwardly, and the kids look to her for support, help. She's considerate, kind, and compassionate. She's super quiet and reserved in the classroom, but she's a very talented singer, actor, and writer. She's very well-rounded. Another teacher said that Anna is a superb student, highly academic and artistically talented in the visual arts, voice, and theater. Anna can be overlooked as a leader as she typically goes about her time quietly, without needing to draw attention to herself, but she emerges as a leader when necessary. She's kind to others and all-around great kid. Another teacher said that Anna, hands down, deserves this award. She is one of a kind, and to show her kindness, at Christmas time, her teacher showed me a card that she had hand-drawn and wrote her, basically thanking her for being a part of her life and helping her this year and with all of her music. So Anna, congratulations. You're a wonderful kid. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Congratulations, Anna. Keep it up. You're doing a great job, especially that musical talent. Help out the young kids, that's really nice.
And finally, with the high school, Mr. Cal.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's my honor to announce Patty Delumba as the high school student of the month. Patty, come on up. Patty is accompanied by her mother, Carol, stepdad Gary, brother Brian, sister Mary, Aunt Donna, and family friend, Mrs. Marks. She's currently in 11th grade and has a GPA of 3.7. Her teachers said the following: First, Mrs. Rush and Mrs. Lochner, they were very pleased when Patty volunteered to help out at the coffee shop before first period. She always walks in with a smile on her face and a good morning, even on the days when her bus is running late. Mr. Cornelius has stated Patty is an incredibly kind, caring, and thoughtful. She is always willing to do whatever it is necessary to make our ensembles better or to help out her friends. Her work ethic and desire to be great is remarkable. Her polite demeanor and positive attitude are two characteristics that help her succeed in color guard and in everything she does. Patty is a wonderful student and is the type of person that will make our world better. Mrs. Zajrowski has stated, "I would love to have a million students of Patty." She is a positive, kind person who is loved by her peers. She's excited to learn and is always on task and does well as a result. She advocates for herself because she wants to learn and loves it. She will do whatever it takes and shoot whatever she does. When she leaves PT, she will succeed. Mr. Krovack stated, "He believes there are four major attributes of being a great student, and Patty exhibits all four of these." First off, she has amazing commitment to learning. Another trait is that Patty displays daily persistence in the classroom. Also, Patty displays an amazing sense of responsibility and is really, if ever, absent. Her assignments are always turned in on time and does it in a quality fashion. I have never witnessed her being unprepared for class. And finally, her trait is flexibility. Patty can adapt to various teaching styles with no issues. She listens to directions and gives great effort regardless of whatever she is doing in class. And finally, Mrs. Harris, Patty is one of my brightest, hard-working students. She constantly amazes me with her work ethic, knowledge, and quality of work. She is one of my top students and is a complete joy to have in class. She is also a very kind and compassionate person. She makes true friendships with so many people. She has the ability to bring out the best of a person and the gifts what they have to offer. So many times I've seen Patty reach out to students who need a true friend and offer her kindness. She is hardworking and finds opportunities to work with animals and is always extremely positive. I am so proud of her. She represents who we should be as people. Congratulations to Patty Delumba as Penn Trafford High School Student of the Month.
We're going to take a few moments to have pictures for the press of all three winners and the parents. You can also come up and get a picture as well. And we're going to come over to this corner, and I know I promised Georgia I was going to get a backdrop for the Students of the Month pictures, but as you can see, I don't have it yet. But we do have a nice morning, girl. If the three Students of the Month can come up? Harris, this is for the newspaper, but you're also welcome to get pictures behind. Congratulations.
We have a recognition of visitors. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address a question of a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally directive, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. And there, we have one sign up, Mr. Dave Danson. Would you come forward, Dave? In as should we, Dancer?
Dancer, yes.
Yeah, you're going.
Yes. Well, my name's Dave Danson. I'm the newly-elected band representative to the board, I guess, and my purpose here today is twofold. The first is, we have several upcoming events that the band's participating in. One is tomorrow night, the Fat Tuesday thing in the cafeteria where the jazz ensemble will be playing. The 20th of February, the Winter Color Guard is having a championship performance at Norland High School. At the same time, the nationally-ranked percussion unit will be competing at East Allegheny. And on the 27th of February, the percussion unit will be here at the high school along with 36 other bands and groups competing. And the kids would like me to personally invite you to come watch them perform. The second part is, you guys obviously have gone to football games and have noticed that we have a dwindling number in the band. We have an upcoming problem with that. We are currently experiencing a down in attendance, and it has come to our attention that we have building principals, guidance counselors, and even music teachers dissuading the kids from joining the band. And I, we, as the band, would like to have your help in trying to rectify this, because we have a really good group of kids, talented kids. They perform all over the East Coast, all over the country, California, Florida, Virginia. They're going March 19th to defend their regional championship, and we need students, we need band members. And I don't know what we can do, but we need your help to try to rectify this situation. Thank you.
I could respond. Don't we respond to that?
Yeah, because we have the meeting.
We've actually, we've had a number of meetings with our music staff, and I can tell you firsthand that, you know, Dr. Harris and I and the principals have addressed that very issue in trying to build numbers in the band. Obviously, it starts at the elementary level and goes to middle school, and hopefully you see the results of that as they get to the high school. So, you know, we have personally talked with our music staff about that and ways that we can do that, and we're continuing to do that. So we, I can tell you, I would be very shocked if any of our principals had dissuaded or discouraged any of our kids from participating in the band. I hope that's not the case, because that's not what we believe in, and that's not what we want. And if any of our staff is doing that, that's something that, you know, certainly we need to address. I hope that's not the case, because I don't think it is, but, you know, you never know. But we want to build the band. We want a first-quality band out there with numbers, and we will work towards that, so you certainly have our support.
We've had several meetings this year where that's been the focus, on how to build the band. Because we've seen the other bands at the competitions we went to, and the sizes are, like you said, they're small.
Right, but we actually have students coming to us, telling us that they were told by so-and-so not to join the band. Do something else, don't go the band route.
Yeah. I will tell you, if that is in fact happening, then I think that that's conversations that we would need to have afterwards, or tomorrow, or whenever. We'd like to hear that, because that is not something that we want to, you know, we have principals here right now, and I can tell you, we want to build the band.
And refer those students to me honestly, if you just tell them, "Dr. Harris, my email's harris@penntrapp.org." If they're saying that to you, they really, telling you is not going to be as beneficial as telling me.
With their kids, they're not going to tell you.
I'd like to make one comment. The only thing I can think of is that if you've got a kid who's aiming to be like number one in a class or whatever, band is not, it's a normal way to class, and it will bring down, QPA's not going to be as high as somebody who doesn't take band, maybe takes a study hall and then takes all the AP classes and all the college and high schools. And I know that firsthand from my daughter, okay? So, and I do know that with my second one, my guidance counselors at the middle school said, you know, if he does continue in band, he's unlikely to get that number-one spot. So, I mean, because of the way the classes are weighted.
But along with that, are they dissuading every extracurricular activity? How many guidance counselors tell them not to go the football team?
Well, that's a little different, because it's not a graded class. I didn't agree with it. My kids took band, and my daughter's a music teacher, okay? So, understand that, but there is the mathematical problem there. Am I wrong in that? Isn't that the case?
You are absolutely correct.
Right, there is a mathematical problem there.
I understand that, but again, I don't think, and this is just my opinion, that, nah, I won't say that, that'll be a step out of bounds, but we're having a problem. And like I said, we have kids that are coming to us, telling us that so-and-so told me not to join the band. And we have a good quality group. These kids are winning just by the competition they go to. So, other than the academics, you know, these kids are getting travel time, they're getting, you know, they're going to different areas, different cultures, doing all kinds of different things. That has to be stuck in your mathematical equation, too.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I understand that. I'm very big on the, I'll be seeing you guys play at Disney this year, okay? I plan a business trip around your Disney trip, so I will be there, but I know from a mathematical, I can see that with a couple kids, so I don't, I guess I would be curious to say, ask these kids, did the guidance counselors give a reason? Did the principals give a reason for this?
I don't know. I'm just telling, you know, we were told.
I would just say right now, Dave, you have definitely spotlighted it.
Yes.
But you've represented, and you have done this, and just give us the rest of the school year, try to.
And we have been, honestly, we've been having several meetings with it. It's huge for us, because when we see our band going down, we want to grow that band where it used to be.
We can see the football games, halftime shows compared to other bands, and you are, what you're saying is absolutely correct.
Yeah, it is a concern of everybody's. I'm not saying it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, no other recognition visitors?
No, no other recognition.
I would like to, scouts, is there any scout leader? Is there a young man that, with his expression, nice turnout here. Is this part of your come to a public meeting? Is that what this is for?
Yes, sir. It wasn't just come to a public meeting. We wanted to, obviously, we're growing our young men to responsible citizens, and obviously part of that is understanding the governmental process in this country, so obviously, we're going to bring them to our local governmental organizations, and the school board is one of those things. So, here we are.
Okay, I want to thank you. I run the benefit option at Trafford every year, and they, Mr. Graham, Mr. Mandich, and Mr. Sinkar, and they have a group of boy scouts, and they're very, very helpful. But continued success to you, and you boys are definitely going in the right direction. What you learn now, you'll carry through your own life.
Mr. Petrusi, I know you wouldn't have checked this, but I get an opportunity to talk to some of the young gentlemen back here, and I was curious to see what their feedback would be related to how they thought the conduct of this meeting went and the issues dealt with, just from the youth perspective, and maybe they possibly have shared with us.
Okay, buddy. Any young man want to speak up?
I think they're going to think about it and come up with something, a glaring report later on.
You can come next month if you want to, or at the end of the meeting, you want to say something, you're one of welcome. The school district's for you. Okay, now may I have motion to approve the church report and the high school extracurricular fund report?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Kachasik, second. Second, Mr. Neimic, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Payment bills, entertain motion, payment of bills for the month of February. Motion, Mr. Leonard, second on motion?
Second.
Second, Dr. Koschko, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Any old business, Dr. Harris? No old business. Okay, just discussing executive session, new business, athletics, extracurricular. Dr. Koschko.
A few things, Mr. President, thank you. Move to accept the following resignation, Rich Ginter, junior varsity softball coach.
All right, motion, Dr. Koschko, second on motion?
Second.
Second, by, Mr. Kachasik, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to employ the following personnel immediately unless otherwise noted. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation, the acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. John Delaney, junior high girls' co-head volleyball coach. John Forsyth, JV softball assistant coach. Rich Ginter, varsity softball assistant coach. Carrie Gutwold, Drama Guild assistant sponsor for the spring. Kelly Guyobler, junior high girls' co-head volleyball coach. Kendall Morasty, junior JV softball head coach. And Steve Vinton, AV director at Penn Trafford.
Motion, Dr. Koschko, second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matarazzo, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And one last thing, Mr. President. Move to approve the following volunteer coaches effective immediately. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34-151 and 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Haley Kettress, volunteer lacrosse coach. Lori Merz, volunteer gymnastic coach. And Julie Ryan, volunteer lacrosse coach.
Motion, Dr. Koschko, any second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Neimic, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, by, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That'll be all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Motion passed, Mr. Kachasik.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Move to authorize the administration to make payments mine to $16,374 for credit served by professional employees in accordance with the negotiated agreement. The list was presented to the board showing the individual payments due, and will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Motion, Mr. Kachasik, any second on motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Koschko, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following expenditure for the high school renovation project according to the schedule as listed.
Motion, Dr. Koschko, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, this is this thing, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following change orders as we discussed last week as listed.
Motion, Mr. Kachasik, any second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Neimic, any question on motion? Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That is all I have this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Billion grounds, Mr. Leonard.
I have nothing but, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, transfers, Mrs. Issing?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Issing. Food service, Dr. Trey?
Nothing beyond we shared at the executive session by our food services program team.
All right, thank you, Dr. Trey. Personnel recruitment, Mr. Stovar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of February 2016 as listed in our answer.
Motion, Mr. Stovar, second by Mr. Kachasik, any question?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following leave request. Charles Baumgartner, FMLA leave from January 26th to February 5th, 2016. Katie Datz, FMLA leave from May 6th through the 31st, 2016, returning for the 2016-17 school year. And Tammy King, FMLA leave from February 5th to the 14th of 2016.
Motion, Mr. Stovar, second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to issue a professional contract to Jamie Buzzard in accordance with Section 1108 of the school laws of Pennsylvania. She has satisfactorily completed three years of teaching in the Penn Trafford School District.
Motion, Mr. Stovar, question on motion? Second on motion?
Second.
Second by Dallas, saying question on motion?
Question.
Question, pull the board.
Okay. Mrs. Issing?
Yes.
Mr. Kachasik?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Koschko?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matarazzo?
Staying.
Mr. Neimic?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Petrucci?
Yes.
Mr. Stovall?
Yes.
Dr. Trey?
Yes.
Motion carries eight yes, zero no's, and one abstain.
It's hard to believe that three years have passed already, because I just remembered, just like the other day, she was starting. I don't know. Time flies. She started off at sunrise, third grade, and then we had some teachers, enrollment decline, and she ended up going to Harrison Park.
Okay, next item, move to approve the following student/teacher intern assignments. California University of PA cooperating professional is Karen Cointer, intern is John Cretazo, area's principal for 180 hours during June and August of 2016.
All right, motion, Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik, any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Move to approve the termination of Nicole Zogelman as an English tutor for Penn Trafford High School effective January 25th, 2016.
Motion by Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemic. Any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the accordance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. All positions are at a daily sub-rate of $100 a day as listed for the PSSA tutors. I'll read the individual ones. English tutor, to be determined for the Penn Trafford High School. Super substitute teachers, Renee Belleville, Penn Traff, or she'll be at Penn Middle effective February 1st. Michelle Bodai, Trafford Middle effective February 1st. And Mackenzie McGuire, Harrison Park, effective February 8th. And then one long-term, or one long-term sub is Megan, I don't know how to say it.
Kosciansky.
Kosciansky, long-term sub for Meredith Hodge at Penn Traff, or Penn Middle School from January 20th through March 23rd.
All right, motion by Mr. Stovall, any second motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Issing. Any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Policy, public relations, legislative title, Mr. Matarazzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We move to accept and file the minutes of the superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, January 4th, 2016.
All right, motion, Mr. Matarazzo, second motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik, any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Move to give tentative approval to the following new board policies as submitted to the board. These policies are required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Division of Federal Programs. Conflict of interest, allowability of cost, cash management, travel reimbursement, and procurement.
All right, motion, Mr. Matarazzo, any second motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Also move to give final approval to the following revised board policies as submitted to the board. Compets of these policies will become an official part of the minutes of this board meeting. Career and technical education, conduct and disciplinary procedures, child abuse, maintaining professional adult and student boundaries, volunteers, and also attachment of the affidavit and volunteer teacher aids.
Motion, Mr. Matarazzo, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Issing, any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
And lastly, move to adopt the Pennsylvania School Board Association's principles for governance and leadership.
All right, Mr. Matarazzo, any second motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, any question or motion?
Question.
Question, all favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. Tax insurers, Mrs. Nemic?
Nothing, hi, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Nemic. Solicitorate report, Mr. Falco.
I have nothing other than what we discussed in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Falco. BTA representative, Mr. Sean Munir?
I do have something tonight. And I know this isn't a commissioner's meeting, but it's going to be a commissioner-type question, and maybe Mr. Leonard can answer this. About a year or two ago, we were supposed to have a Speedway going up by where the drugstore is. Now, whatever happened with that?
The demographics didn't work for the project. They did their studies, they put it up in the project, they weighed out demographics versus a couple of issues with traffic. The mining, the Penn Dart, or Dart Department would have cost them, and it didn't work for them.
So it was, I had heard it was a last-minute thing that they had to feed, that they had to pay, that they backed out on.
No. They withdrew the application.
I just, and I know the commissioners sometimes come to our meetings, but I just don't see that they've done a whole lot tax-base-wise in the last five or 10 years, although they say that they're more business-friendly now. I mean, how do you, what do you guys feel about that? I mean, we have, especially on Route 130, I mean, we have vacant, commercial property's been sitting there for 30 years.
I think I'd be better to speak to them than the commissioners, and that, because